All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Bailey, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bain, here. Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Eigner.
Here.
Councilmember Freer. And Mayor Winnick.
Here. I'll ask everyone to rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll look for an approval of the agenda or changes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we add an agenda item for city administrator recruitment. Perhaps as the new 7F.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so new 7F is city administrator recruitment. And now I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that brings up the open forum. Thank you, Bailey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff members, audience, I'm James Redfield. I live in Lipizant Trail. I come here tonight to discuss the vacancy on the city council. I would like to discuss this. May I make a few suggestions about a process to fill this vacancy? I suggest that you inform the community that people that are interested in being appointed should write up a statement of interest, turn it into the city office by a certain date. And after review of the statements, I suggest that interested candidates could attend a city council meeting. And each candidate would have a certain amount of time to speak, to speak about why they want to be on the council. Maybe they, perhaps five minutes each. These council statements could also be posted on the website for the city so people can see that. Then the city council, of course, would make the final decision in appointment. However, the process would allow the public to get to know people who are interested in serving. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mark Fineman, 20616 Everton Way North. I just wanted to request that the council pull item I from the consent agenda for open discussion. That's my request.
Planning on doing that anyway, so thank you. All right, that ends the open forum. So I'll look for a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda pulling number 6I for further consideration.
Thank you, Sam. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to 6I. And Dan, were you going to take us through that?
Yeah, no, I can speak to that. What 6I is, is we basically have reached out to Ellers and Associates who does financial analysis and financial planning for municipal governments and asked them to prepare a study or a survey or an analysis of various characteristics of a residential care facility, nursing home, multifamily housing, and office retail development were to develop on a retail site or on a generic site within the city. We're basically looking for the analysis to look at various impacts of those potential types of development. So what they're proposing is for each one of those different criteria is a study that would estimate the number and types of jobs created, estimate the annual tax revenues, and then anticipate the long-term economic impact to the community. So what they've done is basically when they, we've kind of asked them to do this economic impact study, they provided us with a proposed cost of, they're going to bill us at the hourly rate of $230 for this study. They estimate the analysis will not exceed $1,500. So what's before you tonight is basically just, or the ask is for the authorization to go ahead and contract with Ellers to perform this analysis work on the economic impact of the various types of development within the city of Forest Lake. Again, it will not exceed $1,500. And they estimate that from the time that we give them the authorization to move forward, they should be able to complete the week, or complete the work within a week is what they've estimated for us. I'd be happy to answer any further questions you may have regarding this particular item.
And have any, anybody else have any questions on that one?
I don't have any question, but I do think that this study is really a good idea because it will give us some real insight into these projects, particularly the project that's being proposed coming up here, so. Just still on topic.
Go ahead.
I want to echo Sam's comments. I also think it's a great idea. One of my concerns about the project is what impact it would have on the entire city and on the land that where we would change the zoning ordinance. And what biggest thing is the unknown of what financial impact it'll have to the city. So I think the city's, this study would be a great idea.
If I could just add a point of clarity, we're not actually with this study, it's not project specific, it's generic specific, so it just gives general terms. I mean, and so this will have, we can use this for other, you know, down the road too. This is not, you know, this is basically just a generic study to say, what if you do this, what does the impact look like? So we have some of those numbers to go forward with.
Yeah, and I didn't mean that. It still is going to be a help, there's no question about it. So it'll bring out some of the facts regardless.
So I don't have any concerns with us approving this as is tonight, but I just think we should be realistic around what it's going to provide. We're talking about six and a half hours of professional work. So there is a, let's be realistic on what the depth of study is. And it's, they do great work, it'll be valuable information, it'll be informative, but I think we should have reasonable expectations of what the outcome's going to be. But that said, I support it.
Yeah, and to that point, this will not probably be a 50 or 60-page exact, you know, deep dive document. This will probably be more of a high-level, some, you know, summarize kind of what those impacts will be, but there will be some data behind it that we could at least use that moving forward for discussion.
And I'm sure they've done quite a few of these before, they're not starting.
Right, yeah, they have a lot of this stuff probably pre-planned, they just kind of develop all it. So I think that's probably why you see the quote where it is, they probably have a lot of this information, this data already existing within, somewhere within their system.
All right. Can we get a motion on 6I?
I'd big motion that we approve 6I and the, going ahead with the developing impact analysis study.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that takes us to regular agenda item 7A, resolution accepting resignation of councilmember Freer and declaring a vacancy. Dan?
Yeah, mayor members of the council, last week, councilmember Freer announced his intent to resign his council seat effective at noon on March 7th. And based on this resignation announcement, there's certain steps that the council must take to statutorily accept the resignation and declare the vacancy. And the first is to formally accept councilmember Freer's resignation, and then the second is to formally declare a vacancy on the city council. The city attorney has prepared a resolution 0312-1802, which formally accepts the, councilmember Freer's resignation and also formally declares a vacancy on the city council. Once that resolution is adopted, there will be a vacancy on the city council. So then the next step for the city council would be to have a discussion as to what do you want that, it's not the best term, but recruitment process for the vacant seat. You know, what do you want to do? Do you want applicants to submit letters of interest, fill out a community, you know, form application? That's basically, at this point, that's the council can kind of direct what they're looking for in that process. But generally, the council may appoint any individual who is eligible for election to that office. And generally, to be eligible, a person must be a U.S. citizen, a resident of the city, a qualified city voter, and at least 21 years old. And again, you know, after the resolution's adopted, you know, recommendations have that discussion to kind of outline what the process will be. Staff can then go back and develop that process and execute that process to make sure that, you know, we are bringing the candidates that are applying, you know, to council for consideration at a future date. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the resolution or what the process will look like.
So a quick point of clarification, when you said qualified city voter, do they already have to be registered? Would they have to have been registered at the time of the last election? Or at what point is that necessary?
Mayor members of the council, so the statutory requirements are those basically found in the Minnesota constitution, so they need to be 21 years of age. A qualified voter would be a resident of the city if they are not yet registered to vote. I mean, they would need to become registered to vote before they could take that next step, but that's, that's pretty much it, so.
All right, thank you, Bridget.
One other question. Dan, is this one motion or two? Do you want two separate motions?
There really isn't a motion required for the process, it's just more of, you know, determine what that process looks like.
I'm talking about 7A.
Oh, no, yeah, that's one motion, that's one resolution. That's one resolution for the acceptance of the resignation and declaring the vacancy, that's all in one, one resolution.
That's just my question, correct, yep. Thanks.
All right, well, I guess before we go any further, doesn't matter what side of fence you're on, it takes a lot of dedication to come here and not just do this job, but, you know, all the commissions and just being involved with your city, caring about your city. And I do want to thank councilmember Freer for the many years that he was here. And, you know, I just really hope we have more people as dedicated and willing to get involved. You know, whatever your personal preferences are, it just, it's really refreshing to have people involved and to help move our community forward. So definitely want to thank councilmember Freer for the years of his service on the council and, and, you know, the various boards and commissions that he was on as well, so. With that, I will open it up for a motion for this resolution.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 03-12-18-02, accepting the resignation of councilman Mike Freer and declaring a vacancy on the council.
All right, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So that brings us to 7B, acting mayor appointment.
Mayor, could you back up just for the process for the appointment?
Okay.
You know, I mean, let's have a discussion, so, I mean, I just want staff to have some discussion, I mean, yeah, it was all wrapped up in that first item.
Okay.
I mean, we're just looking for some, you know, what's that process, to make sure that we're, you know, following through with what the council wishes for the recruitment for this vacant seat.
All right. I mean, I definitely open this up for anybody who's qualified to contact the city and apply. Timeframe of two weeks or?
Two weeks was what I was thinking.
Anybody else have any additions, any desires that they want to see? I mean, I think once we get those applications in, I'll go ahead.
Is the application must, is it online, or can they come in and, must they come in and apply?
I would think online would be fine. I mean, we've got a standard form that they can fill out, correct?
We have a current boards and commissions form that we've used in the past, a PDF form. There was some change to that when we got to the new website where it was an electronic submission form. There would be, the easiest moving forward would be to basically edit that PDF, because to have to go back into the actual online form requires quite a bit of re-engineering on that point. So just since this is kind of an anomaly, we probably would want to go back to that existing commission form. If you wanted to do a candidate statement, we could add that to that form as well and just put an application package listed on the homepage of the website, you know, and then we could just basically email them in. At this point, I probably would have Bailey be the one that would receive those applications. And then at a certain point, like maybe say one on the Fridays of the week, just email out the entire council, the applications that have been received to date, so everybody gets them at the same time. So that's just easier from a workflow perspective where they're just not having to go out as they come in, you just kind of stockpile them Friday, they all go out at a certain time.
So how difficult would it be to just, you know, when they get to the city's website to have a tab right there? Is that something that's easily done?
Yeah, I could, I could.
They don't have to hunt for anything?
Yep, it would be right on the homepage, first thing that you would see. I would basically at this point clear off the rest of that stuff that's there to make sure that is there front and center. And then again, follow that up with, you know, we could do some social media outreach too, just letting people know that, you know, if you're interested parties, you know, there's a form on the, on the homepage of the city's website that can be filled out. And we could even take it as far as putting it in the weekly email as well, just to kind of, again, just kind of give it that full court press in terms of what we do for communications for other things. We can definitely do that for this as well.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Along with that, are the other positions for the other commissions also available online?
They are, yep, yep. Those are on the employment page of the website, because that's, I mean, it's not the best fit, but again, it was a fit where people are already coming looking to be with the city, you know, so that's where they've been warehoused, so we could, I'd be hesitant to put this application that kind of far back, you kind of have to know where it is. I'd rather keep this one separate.
I'd prefer you bring the other ones forward.
Yeah.
That people looking to serve don't have to search where to find the application.
I can put both there, I can put both on the same, I mean, the text of what the actual, the tile will look like on the website is very, it's easy to change out, so I can add whatever we want to. I actually could also do two separate ones, it's probably the easy, the best, so that way if you're looking to serve on council, click one box, if you're looking to serve on a board and a commission, you click another box. But we can definitely get that keyed up and get that put on, you know, for the next two weeks or whatever the duration you want for the open, for the recruitment.
I much prefer that over, I know when I applied, it was hard copies then, and it was probably in stone and chisel at that time, but.
I, um, I think we should specifically ask for a statement of qualifications. If we don't specifically ask, some will provide and some won't, and I think for an equal playing field, we should at least ask. I think that's important, gives us better information of making a decision.
I would just want to add that I'm assuming that was probably going to get some press time out of this, so the notification process would be pretty, pretty well taken care of, I would think.
I would think, yeah, I would hope so, I mean, anybody that's involved.
I think the word's going to be out, so, I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity.
You think, you know, a candidate statement, you know, I, that's fine, I don't know if we can, if we can modify that quick enough, but, I mean, that's something that obviously if we get this up on the website, the city can email that back. I don't know how many people are going to be comfortable filling all that out right away, but, you know, gives them a little time to think about it as well, so.
I mean, I can turn the existing form into a fillable PDF, so that way kind of, you don't need to use the, you have the option at that point if you wanted to use pen and paper to fill it out, or if you want to do the computer option, both options are available. We tend to do that on our employment applications as well, just so if somebody may not have the software to do the, to fill out the actual PDF, they can do it, you know, pen and paper and submit it that way. So I can, I'll, you know, if it's okay with you guys, I can definitely make the form fillable, add a candidate statement to the front, it's pretty easy for me to add, you know, do a candidate statement, and then just use our existing board and commission application, but just change the board and commissions from board and commissions to council, you know, so it's directed so we know what the form is for as it's going forward.
Now, at that point, is that all public? So their address or phone number will not be on there, correct?
No, it is public at the time a candidate applies, I believe, right?
I believe that's accurate, although we'll check on it, but yes, I think that's all public data.
My assumption would be the same rules that applied during the candidate application period, and there's a certain amount of data on those forms that's public, right?
Yeah, everything that's on the candidate application form is public data.
Yeah, I would, I would just highlight that for them, because I, you know, I think some people don't want their phone number and things there and.
They need to know, I agree.
Yeah, I, you know, email, it's easy enough to contact them with, but some of that other stuff they may not want on there.
I could do like a cover page that kind of says, any information that's put on this form is considered public data, you know, so that way your kind of blanket statement, the whole thing, so if they fill it out and submitted, because I just think follow-up would be pretty difficult if a candidate falls in, you had to call and say, do you want this number on there or not? You know, maybe just put that on the, on the front end of it. Also, I mean, we could, there's the possibility of adding as candidates come forward, you know, you could put a, you know, create a separate page, everything kind of gets posted there, so the public would know what's the application look like. Again, that's your discretion if you want that level or not, I mean, you know, it's possible, I mean.
I guess we've all filled that out when we filed for candidacy, so it's going to be that same level of information, but I'm not sure phone numbers are.
We've, in the past, we've taken the candidate application form, any information that's there, and we've just basically put it on as, you know, at a certain timeframe, we update our website saying, here's the candidates that have filed to date, so the public knows. And, you know, we can definitely bring that back to our elections page, we already have that infrastructure built there, we just would need to, you know, kind of refresh it a little bit, and maybe just follow the exact same process that we would do for, as candidates file for the position, with just a little bit of difference in terms of the paperwork that's actually used, you know, to submit or to file for the vacancy.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Any other questions for Dan? Do you have enough guidance to go ahead? Oh.
Quick, just, so two-week, two-week application period, and then do we do a council interview? Do we do a council forum night or some opportunity for everyone to kind of come in and, you know, give five minutes at the mic or what, or what does that look like? And we might want to think about whether there's five applicants or 50 applicants, might want some level of council selection.
When councilmember Klein resigned, we did that, is, you know, came in and had it at a workshop.
Yep, perfect.
You know, a little bit more comfortable setting for them to start off with anyway, and go forward from there. And I don't think there was really a time limit, but as the council, I think, developed a series of questions to ask everybody. And I think, you know, that was a good working format, but I think, go forward and we get a little time to figure that out as well.
Your honor, if I could clarify, so I don't know if the council has in mind specific dates, I was just looking at my calendar here. So the next council meeting is March 26th, which is exactly two weeks away, then I'm assuming there's a workshop scheduled on April 2nd, and then the next council meeting would be April 9th. So does council have any direction to staff about kind of closing deadline for receipt of application or candidate materials and when council would like to have the workshop scheduled and the council meeting scheduled at this time?
I think it should be ready by the April 2nd workshop.
Well, I mean, two weeks from today for taking the applications, I think that's a reasonable amount of time.
It is.
And that puts us ahead of the next council, or that would be at the next council meeting, so we can determine from there to go to the workshop and.
Yeah, the workshop in April is actually April 16th. So you have the, you have the week after that, the week, week of April 7th or 2nd, there actually is not a council meeting that week, there is one on the 9th, would be the next scheduled council meeting. You guys could always host a, or do a special meeting, you know, we could notice a special meeting if you wanted just to do this topic, and if you, you know, wanted just to interview, that week of April 2nd, we could do, you know, a special meeting specifically for this topic.
I think that's a good idea, that's me.
I agree.
Yeah, that's fine with me, I guess.
Expedite things a little bit.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, I don't know if we can look back at candidate questions from the last time we had an opening or not, but if not, I think we should forward to the city questions that we'd like to ask candidates, so.
We could, I mean, with that sequencing, on the 26th, since there's a council meeting, and if the application period is closed, we would know the number of candidates, and you could make adjustments to what you want to do for the actual, so like you said, if you had 50, you may not want to give everybody, you know, I mean, that would maybe shift a little bit what that process looks like, so we could have a discussion point on the 26th, what the meeting format would be on the 2nd, you know, what that process would look like there. So right now, we'd be accepting applications through the 26th, or excuse me, the 20, well, two weeks from now would be the 26th, so close at the 26th, that's say, end of business that day, we'll have our final list of candidates that have applied, we'll then discuss what the meeting on April 2nd would look like for, you know, what the interview process or however that's going to be there.
Yeah, sounds workable.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right. You want to add anything to it?
No, that sounds good.
All right, move on to 7B, acting mayor appointment. Do you want to talk to that, or I can just, you know, you had your name on, I didn't know if you needed to add something to it or not.
No, just that councilmember Freer was acting mayor, so at this point, we would need to appoint another councilmember as acting mayor to fill that vacancy on, at this point.
All right, and I am going to nominate Ed Eichner as deputy mayor.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I got discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
All right. So 7C, building finance, short-term, long-term, staff recommendations.
Mayor members of council, just, we've had a recent resignation of the city's intermediate accounting clerk that took place, I believe it was a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. And we also have a member of the city's building division who's currently out on an approved leave. So we're right now, we're faced with some immediate short-term staffing requirements that we need to get addressed prior to the spring/summer building rush. It may not look like it now, but when the snow melts, our building division definitely, the number of permits that we are processing goes up dramatically once the, the weather picks up here. We typically see that demand really kick in once road restrictions go off, and typically it's on May 1st, however, it can, you know, vary just depending upon what the spring weather does. So what's presented here tonight is a short-term staffing solution to address those short-term needs, and then as well as a long-term solution, which kind of dovetails into that short-term solution that kind of sets us up, sets those two departments up to get us back to, you know, full strength. In the short term, what we've done is basically taken the tasks that were assigned to the intermediate accounting clerk and kind of reassigned those and distributed amongst current city staff. However, as part of this reassignment, there are certain tasks, such as some scanning work, that we've just had to place on hold, because operationally, we do not have enough capacity left in the system to basically get that work performed. So we basically made a decision to put that on hold until we can get additional staff in, in the office to do certain, certain tasks. One thing that is being proposed tonight to kind of help both the finance division and the, the building department is the hiring of a temporary seasonal receptionist. That position is envisioned to kind of be that first person that you see as a, as a builder comes in for a permit or a resident comes in looking to pay utility bills, somebody that can kind of help greet them at the counter, direct them where they need to go. In the instance of filling out a building permit, they can make sure that they're filled out properly. It's one of those things that just kind of helps the staff that's there focus on the work at hand versus kind of always having to administer the window. That receptionist would also help with phone answering, to kind of help with some scheduling of inspections. And then also, as they have capacity, would be able to help to kind of fill up some of that backfill and some of that scanning work that's not being done right now, and some, also some light filing work and just kind of some other administrative work that they would be doing. Since it's a seasonal position, what would be envisioned is that at the end of that seasonal position, the work that that reception is doing would then be reabsorbed back to the staff that's currently there, so it's just a temporary thing. It would help us get through the busiest part of the year, because we do have a big influx of work that comes in, it helps us kind of reach, reach that kind of surge in, in demand. Estimated cost for that seasonal office receptionist is approximately $8,500, but the city currently has budgeted $14,980 for, for part-time wages in the administrative budget, and that's where that $8,500 would be taken out of. So we are budgeted for a position, for a temporary seasonal position. Another part of the short-term solution, and again, given the unique set of circumstances that we currently are facing, we have reached out to a firm that does offer contract building inspections. What's so, when we looked at the, kind of the workload that we have, we kind of determined that residential building inspection is one thing that we could contract out, and with the ability that after three months, bring that back in-house, we did not want to do commercial inspections, just given the fact that commercial projects have a longer shelf life, and wanted our inspectors to be starting on those projects and continuing all the way through. However, a lot of residential projects, you know, you can, you can contract that out and easily, more easily bring that back in-house at the end of the contract. So what we're proposing is a contract that would run from April 1st through July 1st of 2018. Did some analysis work on the contract, and that time period encompasses 64 working days. And based on past inspection records, we've estimated that residential inspections are approximately five hours a day. Now again, that number could vary slightly up and down just depending upon demand, but we've, you know, running the averages, we're looking at about five hours a day. So when we started costing that out, the contract that we have, or the initial contract that we received, has a three-hour minimum, so if we have an inspector out every single day, the minimum that will pay was $15,360, and that's for the three hours a day, and that's the minimum.[1797.73] pay was $15,360, and that's for the three hours a day, and that's the minimum. We can't have them in just for an hour. They have to come out for three hours. We're paying for that regardless. If we were to use them for eight hours a day, we were looking at approximately $40,960. Again, we don't think we'll need that much service throughout the entire contract. So we've figured out that five-hour average brings you in to around approximately $25,600. Again, want to predicate that with the fact that those numbers could shift slightly just depending upon what the demand is for building inspections. The 2018 building budget does have $32,350 currently in the budget for professional services. And what would be presented here would basically be any contract residential inspection that we are charged would be coming out of that, that line item for $32,350. So we wouldn't have to ask for additional funds. We are currently budgeted for this work. We do have an initial contract from Minspect. That's who we reached out to on this one. We still have not done the full, we haven't got it legal for their review yet. Was working on more of the internal long-range, short-range planning prior to kind of going to here. But that would be, you know, if we are implementing a short-term plan and a long-term plan, I'd reach back out to Minspect, kind of have some more detailed level questions in terms of more logistically, what does a day inspection look like? How do we do the scheduling? And at that point, to also negotiate, does any negotiations in that contract, perform legal review at that time as well, and then bring that back at March 26th meeting for consideration. So just kind of summarizing, the temporary seasonal receptionist, you're looking at approximately $8,500 for that. And then for the contract residential inspections at five hours a day, you're looking at approximately $25,600. One thing with this plan too, is as, if we have any excess capacity, we do have, one of our, our current building inspector could potentially go back out and do some residential. So there's a lot of moving parts that we can play in and out. However, not knowing how long your leave is going to last, we needed to make sure we kind of covered the bulk of that building season. So if that employee does come back early from leave, we'd be able then to kind of carve back on the number of residential inspections that we would need. Or there's also a number of permits that are currently still open from last year's storm that we could then send somebody else to start closing those permits out as well. There's a, I mean, I think the number is approximately 1,000 or so that are still kind of open from last year's storm that we need to get closed out. So we have kind of this bottleneck of work that came in after last week's, last year's storm that we're still trying to clear. And again, we anticipate another kind of surge from some carryover permits from last year that never got issued to come forward again. So we're kind of anticipating another surge in, in demand. That kind of leads us to our long-range staffing plan. So the long-range staffing plan, what that envisions is basically authorizing recruitment for, to fill the vacated intermediate accounting clerk. It's a, it's a replacement position. It's currently in the budget for 2018, so there's no budget impact by opening that up for recruitment. One thing that was discussed at the personnel committee level was adding a daytime fire response to the intermediate accounting clerk. I did caution that by doing that, it's, you're looking for a pretty specific skill set by having finance and accounting that aren't necessarily always seen together. So what we kind of figured out was we would, you know, have that as an optional, you know, on the job description, say optional daytime response, but not make it required of the position. So if for some reason we're finding a candidate that has a solid finance background and a daytime capable response, you know, that would be a great fit. However, we're not going to, you know, basically not hire a great finance person just to try to get another firefighter on board. You know, we've had that discussion in-house. At this point, that is a finance need. There's definitely a need in the finance department for an intermediate accounting clerk because that work right now needs to be performed. The second part of the long-range plan would be the authorization recruitment for an additional fire technician permit or position. The fire technician, we have one right now, and they're responsible for issuing building permits and daytime fire response. Currently, our current fire technician is actually going through the succession plan to actually move into a building inspector role at some point in the future. We don't have a definitive date when that succession plan or that transition will be completed. However, that is a long-range plan, is we've made the investment in our current fire technician to start the transition into a building inspector role. So what we're trying to ask for at this point is, since we have an immediate need for work and long range, when we look at the long-range forecast, we still see building permit, you know, it's projected that building permits, the demand for that's going to remain strong. We have enough projects that are in the pipeline or potentially have been discussed that. We don't see that number dropping off in, in the near future. And with a succession plan in place as well, at some point, we'd be having to come back to refill this position, you know, to ask for a fire technician as, as our current fire technician transitions into the inspector role. So basically, we're asking for a secondary fire technician a little bit earlier so we can kind of, A, meet the demand that we have, and B, set us up so when the succession plan is fully realized, that we don't have to come back and ask for recruitment at that point. One thing that, with authorizing a second fire, or fire technician for 2018, I want to make it clear that we do not have this in the budget currently. However, even though it's early in the year, when we've looked at what the current and projected building permit revenue is for 2018, we do see that there probably will be more likely than not enough building, access building permit revenue and building plan review revenues that will be able to cover the shortfall. However, if for some reason it dries up, they might not realize, we will need to make that, you know, commitment to fill that gap. When I've looked at the numbers, I've anticipated a new hire would start approximately mid-May. So the budget impact would be approximately $55,168. That's benefits and salary all included, that's all encompassing at this point. But again, just want to clarify that, you know, that's not a currently budgeted item. However, when we look at the projections, when we ran through the numbers, we are, we anticipated plan review on building permit revenue pretty conservatively in the 2018 budget, and we anticipate going beyond that this year. So we would be able to pull from that excess revenues to cover this additional hire. So the requested action at this point would be to direct staff to begin the implementation of the short-term plan, which again, includes the hiring of a temporary seasonal receptionist, and then to start to finalize the contract negotiations for the short-term, three-month contract building, residential building inspections. Also authorize recruitment of an intermediate accounting clerk, and adding in the option of daytime firefighting response into the position description. And then the final ask is authorize recruitment of an additional fire technician. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the, the plan presented.
Would you mind repeating that?
I do have one, one minor question. You mentioned that the, the contracted temporary inspector, and you said that you averaged at five hours of work to start. Is that to start, or would you come in, bring him in at 40, and then as we go on?
I, I think the averages for a costing analysis, I mean, I think it's going to really depend on a number of factors. Is A, what's the low, what's the, you know, when do we actually hit that peak in terms of building demand? I mean, I think, I wanted to present a realistic number. I didn't want to come in and say it's going to be three hours a day, or it's going to be eight hours a day, you know. So I would probably anticipate probably closer to three to five to start. And then as it starts to ramp up, we probably would go to that eight. However, that being said, there's a couple other variables in the play where if our current fire technician is able to get the recruitment, you know, start doing the training of, if we are able to authorize another recruitment, they, that individual will then be freed back up, start going back on inspections, which would then decrease the number of, you know, contract hours that we would need. I mean, I, the goal with this would be to minimize the number of contract hours that we actually are using and put that back on staff. Because again, July 1st, when that rolls around, current staff will be continuing on with these inspections. So the more we can keep them out in the field performing inspections, the better, long-term. The contract is basically a stopgap, so we don't have inspections sitting out three, four, five, six, seven days, you know. So we're able to kind of meet that demand as we get that surge that comes through.
I was kind of leaning the other way, that you bring them in strong at more hours because you already have a backlog, and you could taper off.
Good point.
And then you're going to get that surge. Hopefully, you'll get that surge in buildings, so.
And that, and that's one point too, with the backlog that's there. They, we are negotiating out a secondary price because those closeouts are a little bit different than a standard building inspection. So they, we're looking, negotiating a price right now for what it would be to close out permits. So if they're able to, and say on a slower day, take care of five or six of those closeouts, just, I mean, it, it starts to help us get back to a point where we're not so far back and so far backlogged.
I sure like the flexibility.
Yeah, but the, but the hours, I mean, this individual would be, have to be flexible, that he could increase his hours.
Correct. Yep, and that's, we...
And that might cause an issue to try and get somebody.
With a contract?
To have somebody, I mean, usually people whether they work part-time or whatever they like, these are my hours kind of thing, you know. So, well, no, tomorrow you got eight hours.
With, with the way I understand, and Al could correct me if I'm incorrect, but the way I understand with this contractor is basically, we set the number that we want the next day. So based on the schedule. So if we have five, five hours one day and the next day we have three, that's what they work. You know, we have a little bit of authority there, saying, you know, ability to say eight hours Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and five hours on Friday if we can backfill. So there's a lot of, I mean, we're maintaining a lot of flexibility there. And again, the goal would be to try to keep as much of this inspections done by city staff as possible, just so we are building that history and maintaining that history moving forward. So when this contract is done, we're not kind of having to scramble and kind of backfill through this three months. We're just trying to make sure that we're turnkey going in and turnkey coming out of this, this temporary situation.
And then they, Minspect provide, or they're going to provide their own vehicle as well.
Yep.
So we don't need, we don't have any additional expenses there anyway, so. Well, there's definitely a significant need for it at this time, and, and we just, unfortunately, with injuries and other things, we're, we're shortfall on staff. So we have to address this both temporary and long-term. I think the plan that, you know, has been developed, brought to the personnel committee is, is very good. The accounting portion of it, I really think that we need to have a professional look at our procedures. I think we can save a lot of time and increase a lot of efficiency by updating some of our accounting procedures, and it's a perfect time to try and address that as well. So I'd like to, you know, look at, look at either the people that are doing our financials right now, or someone that's qualified to really address, you know, how we do that and, and what we can do to make that a lot more efficient than we have now. Go ahead, Omar.
So along those lines, so maybe some, it wasn't clear in the packet, and I just wanted to clarify for everybody. The role that was vacated was a split position between accounting and building, correct?
Originally, it was not. So originally, this was a finance role, but then when the storm surge hit last summer, we ended up having to temporarily reassign to meet the demand.
Yep.
You know, but they were working split. Yeah, correct.
At the time, what was this, what was that split? Because what I'm seeing is that, that the, that accounting portion is either going to be redistributed, those duties will either be redistributed or some will wait. So how much of 40 hours, is it 50/50? Is it?
I mean, I, it depended on, on the time of year. I think initially, there was probably more, you know, but again, that split happened at the expense of people who were already working a pretty full plate.
Correct.
Picked up extra duties as a result of the split. And it's, you know, so part of it was envisioned here as kind of a readjustment because we have certain employees that are just, their work, if you look at their workload, it's, you know, it's too much for the position.
So with that, that being the case, and this is just the type of environment where in an accounting position, bad things can happen. And so I just wanted to make it clear that in my position, if we needed to get some budgeted additional temporary hours from AEM to help cover some of that gap, by all means, I would like staff to have that freedom to bring that to council because I think that we've covered the building side. Let's make sure we're also covered well on the accounting side.
And...
Rolling into audit season, audit support's important. These are just positions we want well-filled, so.
And I think to speak to that point, I mean, part of what the temporary receptionist is doing, I mean, because what we're, where our issue at this point in the finance department is actually getting data into the system. It's not necessarily the higher-level analysis work.
Understood.
That's still being performed. A lot of it is basically getting invoices aligned with budget codes and that kind of intermediate-level accounting work.
Yep.
And, you know, so I mean, yeah, there's a backlog of scan work, but with that new workflow that, you know, I designed for, for that, that's basically scan the packet in, and that workflow will process it. So I think that can be done pretty much by, you know, I mean, we're just scanning in. So we should be able to get caught back up. However, if it comes July, we're not caught back up on the finance side, then maybe at that point, come forward with, you know, some extra AEM assistance. But in, in the conversations I've had with staff, they're pretty confident that, you know, getting some additional people up there will help us get caught back up on the finance side as well, after we redistribute some of the, the workloads that have been kind of shuffled around a little bit as of late.
One more point of clarification on the accounting role. So is there a firefighter preference for recruitment, or is it an option of, we will provide that as an opportunity in the job description, should we find somebody who is interested in both?
It's that, and as I presented to the, the personnel committee, it's basically, if we find the unicorn in the pen of horses.
Yes.
We'll hire the unicorn. However, we're not going to specifically look, just look for the unicorn. So I mean, you're right, it's on there, but if, if we can get it, great. If not, we're, we're hiring finance at this point.
Perfect.
You know, I think if you look at the, the grade and level of pay that goes with the city accounting, that I think we can find a firefighter that, you know, it's, it's not a gender-specific job either.
Agreed.
But I mean, it's, it's definitely premium wages in that type of market.
But not everybody in that role is also interested in fighting fires. And so I just want to make sure we're clear on what the priority is.
Kind of a dual recruitment role, so.
Just like we would allow that opportunity to almost any daytime city employee, correct? Right? If Dan wanted to be a part-time firefighter, we might consider that as an option.
Exactly.
And, and I think it was clear when we kind of went and had conversations with Chief Newman, that, you know, basically, if we have the stellar finance candidate that comes in, that's going to, you know, excel in finance, but doesn't, no desire to be a firefighter, that would not eliminate that candidate from consideration.
That's just what I wanted to be clear. Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I'll look for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion then, that, that we accept the building and finance, short-term, long-term staffing recommendation, as Dan so eloquently described it. And I guess there isn't much else to put on there, so.
All right.
Well, second.
Any further discussion?
Sam, just to be clear, it's all of the requested actions by staff, is that's correct?
Yeah.
You intend, okay. Just to be clear. No further questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dave?
Here in Marion Council, I'm here tonight, we had a discussion last council meeting about the purchase of a ground master lawnmower. It was getting kind of late moving, and kind of decided to bring it back to the next meeting. So I'm here tonight, I just kind of streamlined the memo, as we kind of discussed it before. I'm just looking for a discussion between council and myself. There's different options about either purchase option or lease option. There's also an option of summer/winter use, whether it be full-time public works use and public works and building department use. So I'm just really here tonight to look for a discussion and, and get direction from council.
All right. There was, I don't have the options in front of me right now, for lease/purchase. There were two different options.
Yeah, it's... Yep, so there's, I have the, the one on this memo is the, at the end of the lease, you'd own it, and that would be the $21,000 per year. And then to buy it outright would be just about $77,000. There's also an option that at the end of the lease, you would not own it, and that was right around $18,000 a year. But at the end of that lease, you turn it back and you would have a piece of equipment. The lease, the lease option or the, the purchase price would still stay consistent with the pay-go as either you would pay the amount out of the capital equipment fund right now, or it would get tapered over four years.
I think you did.
Dave, the lease versus buying outright, is there any difference in warranty or maintenance or?
The lease would have a 48-month warranty, so for the entire lease, it'd be a comprehensive warranty. So basically, barring oil changes and sharpening blades, everything else would be covered. With the purchase, you could purchase a warranty on top of it, and that would get you about to the same price as where the lease is at, right around $3,000 to buy that warranty for four years.
What's, what's the normal warranty on it, just without the extension?
Normal warranty is six months.
Oh, wow.
About a season.
On the warranty thing, Dan, do they come here to fix something that's broken, or do you have to take it in somewhere, or what was that?
Any Toro dealership, so Hugo Equipment would be able to do all the service work there. If it's something that was immobilized, they have techs that would come out. But like, say at the end of the year, you'd bring it in for warranty work, that they'd go through the piece, you know, piece of equipment and, and service it. So it's all covered in the inside of the warranty.
So at the, and at the end of the four years, we own it, or have the option to trade it in, do whatever we want with it at that point?
Correct. So the one advantage to a lease would be, so this is kind of a newer piece of equipment for public works, and we don't quite under, realize yet how much we can do, how little we can do, how much time it's going to take, how little time. So... do, how little we can do, how much time it's going to take, how little time. So a lease, just like in a car, if after a year, you go, man, we should have got the 15-foot groundmaster, or this one was too big, we should have got the 8-foot, you can just roll your lease into that different piece of equipment. Whereas if you purchase it, you're stuck with it, and you lose, you know, and once you take it off the lot, you lose a lot of money right off the bat. And if you change your mind at that point, or want to upgrade, then you have to not only sell that piece off at a loss, but rebuy the next one. Whereas if you're in a lease and you upgrade it to a 15-foot, it might just be a thousand or $1,500 a year difference. That's where the advantage lies with the lease.
Well, I think we need the piece of equipment, there's no question about that. I think it's going to, you know, obviously provide a lot of increase in productivity. And I think every, every public works employee we have, that can run a piece of the equipment rather than doing something by hand, or with a, with a much smaller piece of equipment, makes us money. So it's just a question, we're at that pay-as-you-go point right now. And, and this is where I just, I'm struggling with it a little bit, too, because I don't know if this, you know, it's, it's a lot of money for a lawnmower, but is it the right lawnmower? We don't have experience with it yet. I would, I would personally recommend going more towards a lease, slightly more expensive, but.
That's where.
You've got the maintenance included. You're not going to be covered if it's damaged, but that wouldn't be any different than if we owned it ourselves, anyway. But I, I just, until we know if this is the right machine, I mean, what we're using right now definitely isn't the right machine, and it isn't very effective, I would, I would like to see us go towards the four-year lease, with us owning it afterwards. And that's, I think, the goal there. And I don't think we're deviating from our pay-as-you-go, but I just, I just feel it's a little bit more frugal to have them be able to maintain it, and get some history if this is going to be the effective machine in the future, or if we want to, you know, trade it in right away to get something different. If it's a lease piece of equipment, I think we got more ability to do that. Once we own it, they're not going to want it back, so.
I, I agree. I don't think it's, it's a little bit more expensive. I don't think it's that different, that it is contrary to the pay-as-you-go plan. I think the budget impact is minimal, so.
Correct.
I agree.
I think in the last meeting, we talked about some implements that could be added to the machine for adults, people to use. We talked about, I believe, a sweeper, or a snow, was it a snow thrower was the other one?
Yep. So that, that's kind of the.
Are there, my question is, are there other implements that going forward, we could use, like, you know, more severe things, like cutting ditches and things like that? Or is that not an option with this?
No, it's, it's, it's not very, for going off-road mowing, it's more of a finish-cut mower, kind of a summertime.
For more for parks and the airport, that kind of stuff.
Yep. And then in the wintertime, it's built for trails and sidewalks, not really anything more in-depth than that. It's, I mean, it's, you can go very fast, and then it's very efficient, but, you know, it's not made for.
And does this include the cab enclosure for the winter?
This, this one, with this price, the, the price includes the cab, which has the heat and all that, for the wintertime. You know, that bring, that does bring the price up. You know, if you just had it for someone solely, it probably adds $4,000 to $5,000 to add the whole enclosure and all the inside cab.
But the lease, as stated, does not include that?
As stated, the price as stated, comes with the cab, the light kit, the whole, whole thing, yep.
I'm, I'm sure, I sure agree with you guys as far as the lease is concerned. I'm, so I'm leaning at least, if you look at that.
Well, like, for doing the sidewalks and stuff, it's got to be at least twice as fast as a Bobcat does it right now, isn't it?
Yep.
So I mean, we're.
And it fits, and it fits on the sidewalk. The, we have, we have the skinniest tires we can have on the Bobcat, and you still fall off on the sidewalks that are right along the curb. Where this is, at about 56 inches, so your 60, 60-inch curb, you still got more enough to go.
All right. I'll look for a motion.
I guess the only other, the only other discussion is utilization. Does the council prefer, I know we have talked about that the last meeting, so it would be the summertime use with public works, and then it would be used here at the, the city center. The advantage to that would be that we wouldn't have to buy an extra piece of equipment, as theirs is aging, and it's going to be up, up time to purchase. So that would be the one advantage. It could stay in public works year-round and be utilized there as well, but the advantage for, at the building department would be saving the purchase of one piece of equipment.
But.
Oh, go ahead. I would assume that if public works needed it during the winter for anything special, that it'd be no problem, right? Or vice versa?
Yeah, I think, I think it would, it'd be housed here, and then during the working hours, we could come here and grab it if, you know, the sidewalks.
If needed.
Clear.
Yep.
Are the attachments part of, were they included in the budget? Or are they, is there room in the budget for the attachments, or is that going to be an out-of-budget item?
So if, if it was like a cooperation with billing and public works, then the billing department would, would purchase the attachments with, with their funding. Instead of buying the piece of equipment, they would buy the attachments.
And the building department has that within budget?
Through the sale of the current equipment, that should be able to fund the attachments.
Okay.
Okay, I was under the assumption we were going to do all our, or try to do a majority of our sidewalks with this in the wintertime, not just here.
And that, and that's, that's definitely an option. That's why I wanted, that's what was up for discussion. I mean, it could stay as a full-time public works doing trails and sidewalks, you know, and that was just the one, the old way, and is you want to have another piece of equipment that building would have here, and then us use that for, you know, year-round, or, you know, swap the time out. I mean, it's, public works can always use the equipment year-round. I mean, that's.
Yeah, well, I mean, it just seems kind of illogical to have, have one piece of equipment just for this building, and not for, I mean, we should be able to do this building and other things with the same piece of equipment. I mean, there's not that much sidewalk right at, at this location to, to deal with. I mean, I, compared to the rest of the town, anyway, just, if we have something that's going to plow our sidewalks twice as fast, three times as fast, I, I don't know why we wouldn't want to do that, instead of just leaving it parked here.
It would just take a, a change of how we do things, because currently, building maintenance does the sidewalks, and here, and then public works does the trails throughout the city. So if that were the case, then we, public works would probably have to take over the sidewalks here, because we start way earlier than these guys do.
I don't know. I, I mean, I'm fine with leaving staff to, you know, kind of figure that part of it out. But I'd just like to see every piece of equipment we have utilized to its best ability.
No, and I agree.
Ed, go ahead.
If you, we're also, if you're over an inch and a half snow, contractor comes in, right?
Yep.
Does he do the sidewalks here, then?
Yep. So you, you get into the, you get into the situations, if it starts snowing at noon, you know, the contractor won't come until midnight. So the building crew here will go out and clean all the sidewalks here and over across the street, you know, and then if you get anything under an inch and a half, then they clear it as well.
And what kind of depth of snow will this handle?
Well, the blower will handle up to 18, 24 inches, and then the broom will.
But you could easily do sidewalks.
Yep. Sidewalks typically, you're pretty good at two inches. You can get if it's pretty light. Heavier stuff is a little more difficult.
I have for purchasing it, or leasing it, I should say, and letting you guys work out how you're going to use it.
I agree.
I, I do, too. I think it's something you guys can figure out. Really do. Seems to me you could have some kind of a borrowing situation back and forth, because really, the question is where you're going to start. That's what I'm hearing. Seems to me that it'd be a pretty simple thing to figure out, so.
Well, and I think storing it here is, is not a bad idea.
Yeah, I know.
And, you know, police and fire, to be able to take care of that first, before you head out on other sidewalks, is a good idea. You wouldn't have to trailer it, anyway, right? You'd just drive it, so. Yeah. I, I just assume that you guys work out how it works, how are you going to use it that first winter or summer, and hopefully go from there, you know. Then down the line, we may end up with a second one, or a different one, but, you know, then we can split them out, but, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to that effect, that we would lease the machine, and we, that we allow the staff to work out the details, when, when and how, and where it's going to be stored, and that sort of thing.
All right.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. And.
Posed?
Yeah. There was a question from Bridget when, when we were doing the votes. And the question was, did that include, include the attachments? And yes, my motion did include the attachments.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry, Bridget.
I apologize.
Give me the attachment to the motion.
Attachment to the motion, for the motion.
I approve the attachment to the motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Seven, thank you. 7E, Ryan.
Mayor, City Council has identified in the capital improvement plan, the city has budgeted $215,000. Tonight, we request that the City Council authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the 2018 Reclamation and Double Chip Seal project. Within the packets, includes a tentative schedule. Obviously, we'll go pretty quick to possible award, and then location map. With that, I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, we look for the City Council to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for the 2018 Reclamation and Double Chip Seal project.
How, Ryan, how is last year's on Forest Road? How's that holding up?
I think Forest Roads held up remarkably well for, you know, the traffic that road sees. That was more of a test strip there, but we also did a large section of 190th East of.
That's right.
61. That's held up really well, too. And maybe Dave can comment if they've had any issues with snow plowing. I don't believe so, but feel free to speak, Dave.
There's like four potholes that have popped up, and they're all from where somebody decided to do a burnout when we first put it down. So through the, the winter, all the plowing, it's, it's held up just fine. Now it's starting to move with the, the thaw coming out, and it's holding together really well. So I mean, it's a very good experiment that we did. I mean, it's been done before, but I mean, it's, it's proven to be very valuable, keeping the dust down, and giving us, you know, a very stable road.
All right. Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify the, the section to be chip sealed is, just want to make sure I'm clear on the location. Is it the dash on the?
Yep, it's the thicker dash line. So it's roads that previously have been coated with millings for the last couple of years from public works, from the local mill and overlay project.
Yep.
So it's 240th in the north, just west of Highway 61. And then last year, we went from Highway 61 eastward on 190th, and that's where you see it start again.
Yep.
And then a section that was also down in the middle, and then we'd finish Haro-Hanna connection. And then depending where bids come in, we would go west of 61 to on 190th. That's, we'll be bid it as an alternate.
And that would be the final option, only if bids allow for it.
So you'll, the base bid is the segments that I mentioned first.
Okay.
And then separately, will be shown as alternate one.
Got it.
So when we do bring the bids back for potential award, we'll can have discussion at the April 23rd City Council meeting, ultimately what you award.
Perfect. No further questions.
So 200, how many thousand was this?
215, is what I'm seeing here, Ben.
And how many, about how many miles are we giving onto that?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I, one time, I don't have the distance.
I mean, it doesn't look like.
About 15, $12 to $15 a foot, typically what we've been seeing.
Versus like, this new asphalt down is.
Shape and pave out in the rural areas is about 100 a foot, project cost.
Extremely good value on that. Are they doing, do they, any subbase below this? Or they just mill it and put it down?
Well, the reason we target these particular sections of the gravel roadways is because this is where the millings for the last couple of years from the local mill and overlay projects have been placed. Thus, we've been increasing the base value of those roads over time.
And now.
And then the, the millings have gotten so hard, so we first come in and do a full depth reclamation, to be able to reshape and put the crown in the road, and then do the double chip seal on top of it.
Any fabric down first, or?
We're not going into the subgrade, so.
Okay. All right. Well, it seems like a really good value. I think we've got limited history, but it seems like it's holding up better than expected, or as good as expected.
The Forest Road project looks really nice yet. I mean, it's really worked out well, I think. It's been great. And I travel that road just about every day, so.
All right. I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2018 Reclamation and Double Chip Seal project.
I'll second. Oh, sorry, Ed, go ahead.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. And now that brings us to the new 7F, City Administrator Recruitment.
Yeah, I contemplated just bringing this up in council updates, but thought it was probably worth a, more of a discussion, so thank you for allowing it to be added to the agenda. I'm just concerned, we're getting close to 90 days of about the time from when Aaron first gave notice, and we still don't have a job description out there. We don't have a full project plan. Seeing activity in the city and what's happening, kind of with, you know, demands on interim administrator undom's time in particular, and staff demands, there's a lot going on. And so I'm concerned about our ability to recruit an internal, city, do an internal recruitment. I know that there was a, a plan in the works to, to do that, but even if we do present a plan, I'm still concerned with our ability to execute on that plan. And so I would encourage us to revisit a third-party recruiter, just given the timing where we are in the project, and just the scope of work that's happening right now. Just wanted to bring that up.
All right. Well, that's, you know, with my, with my conversations with Dan, I was kind of comfortable with how things are progressing, but do you want to speak to update? I mean, we have had a couple of things come up.
Yeah, I mean, and that's probably, I mean, that's one of the reasons, I mean, my original intent was to have kind of that plan outlined for tonight. However, given what I've had to deal with the last couple of weeks, it just, it just was not able to get on my work line. I mean, and, you know, kind of if things, you know, calm down, I can revisit that. However, the plan that is being developed, there's a lot of demand on council for, you know, drafting and for management. And again, because this was, you know, what I was working on was a turnkey program that, you know, council level would manage, you know. That was the vision behind it, considering that, you know, typically staff has managed, you know, recruitments. But at this point, given, you know, the position that would typically rise to, you know, either outside consultant would manage that process, or at this point, council, or a designated group of council members would then, you know, kind of shepherd that process through. Again, depending upon how my next two weeks lay out, I mean, I could definitely get that drafted, you know. I mean, I think realistically, if I can get some wall time in there, I can get back to that project. However, if it progresses like it has the last two weeks, you know, that, that's just, it's tough to do when you kind of have all these other kind of one-off issues that keep coming up, that do require time to kind of get through. And, you know, I mean, I have had a couple of meetings, just kind of looking at advice on the process to really outline that, but have not got to the point where I have a, a, a plan that's presentable at this point. And, you know, realistically, I mean, the goal would be to bring something back to council in a couple of weeks. However, that's caveated with the fact that now, I mean, even tonight, we have a couple of recruitments that are now authorized, that have to get up and running. There's some other tailoring work that has to be kind of worked through. So I mean, you know, I mean, the two-week would be a goal, however, that may be bumped back, too, just depending upon what the demands of the day-to-day are. Because we, I mean, we are, you know, at the city staffing level, we have been short-staffed for a while, so we've been kind of wearing, you know, multiple hats, you know, which is, does take away from what you can produce, especially for an internal recruitment, so.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't, suggestion is, give us an update in a week, just an email?
Sure.
And then we can update again at next council meeting. And if we have to go, you know, a different direction.
We know what those options are, and so.
Just, the only comment I want to make on that funeral mine is that I, personally, I just feel a lot more comfortable if we did have professional recruitment, because of the amount of work. This is a big deal. This is a big deal for, you know, when you're talking about, you know, recruitment of a city administrator. And so I just want to make sure we're doing it right, that we get it thorough. So that's just my opinion, and I would be leaning toward that direction, so.
Okay. We'll make that decision soon here, then. All right. Take us on to ACE Hardware Invoices.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the ACE Hardware invoices.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
One abstaining.
All right. Winix Supply invoices.
I'll make a motion that we pay the Winix Supply invoices.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? And one abstain. All right, staff updates. Dave?
Just one quick update. Wait restrictions are on. They start in March 5th, typically six to eight weeks, so we're on the May 1st date when they'll come off, so.
All right. All right. The hook lift truck, has that been delivered already, or?
Yep. It got, it was our Christmas present and came on the 27th of December, so.
Haven't seen it rolling around yet, so.
Been out in the northwest. That's where it's, the northwest of the city, it's been piled, so.
All right. Chief?
I have no updates unless you have something for me.
Well, should be all set. And Chief?
Yep. Mr. Mayor and city council members, as many of you are aware, last Monday, we had a serious incident that started in Wyoming, ended up making its way here to Forest Lake, and ultimately ending with the capture of a known fugitive in Leno Lakes. I just want to take this time to publicly thank a few people. There are multiple agencies that were involved, but I specifically want to thank Fire Chief Al Newman, Captain Greg Weiss, Sergeant Bruce Peterson, and Wyoming Sergeant Brian Rod for their help and their assistance. And it was a very serious injury, or a serious incident that could have led to catastrophic injuries, and it did not. And our department, along with Wyoming, U.S. Marshals, and many others, Minnesota State Patrol, worked very well together. And we actually had our Incident Command Center set up here for that incident, and it worked out fantastic.
All right.
Nice work.
Now, Walmart was evacuated, was a suspect actually in the building, or was it a-
We do not know, even till today, if he was actually in there. We are not sure. Video footage, we did not observe him in there, but we had just fantastic tips from the community members, which assisted us greatly in actually locating him and eventually capturing him.
Well, the alert system worked very well, too, I think.
Yes, the code red was activated, and it did work well. We did learn some things along the way, which you always do when you're dealing with a critical incident like that. But all in all, it worked out very well.
Well, as nice as the, or as fast as the incident developed, you know, the communication was out there, too, and, you know, very important to have that, and.
Yeah, definitely. It was a very fluid incident. I mean, things were just developing minute by minute, so.
All right.
Especially appreciate the notice at the end that it was clear and, you know, suspect was captured, situation was over. It was a good, nice added touch. Yep.
All right. I think, question two, where are we at with like an explorers program or a police reserve program?
I think that will be a good discussion once we get the case study back from the Center of Public Safety Management. I do believe there might be some recommendations in there, and I'm anxious to see that when it comes back, and we'll see what they recommend, and I think we could have a good discussion at that time.
All right. Thank you. And Bailey?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Dan?
Just a couple of quick updates. First of all, I just want to thank all the city staff for stepping up as we've kind of gone through this kind of low period in terms of like just staffing availability. All the staff has been phenomenal just in terms of stepping up, wanting to kind of take on different work and kind of shift. So, I mean, I'm really appreciative of them wanting to step up and kind of help us get through this period of time, and it's been greatly appreciated. On March 25th, the city's annual Easter egg hunt is scheduled from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Lakehead Memorial Park. We also have on March 30th, the American Legion Pie in the Face is taking place from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Lakes Area Expo is on March 24th. The city will actually be having a booth present at that. At this time, we're looking at, I think, probably a mirror what we did last year. We did a little bit of recycling outreach at that event. We also had some building information, and then we had some park, upcoming events for parks and stuff advertised as well. Last year, we had a good turnout, a lot of people had a lot of questions, a lot of, were able to do a lot of answers and Q and A during that period. So we'll be back up there for Lakes Area Expo on the 24th, and then just at the EDA meeting tonight, circular bus, but I'll defer to ED members to kind of give an update on the circular bus tonight. That's all I have.
All right. We have an alternative on cases, Ryan, on the Easter egg hunt?
We probably do. I learned last year that I am not the person to make that prediction. I told Jamie, go ahead and have it in the park, and then as the event would have been happening, it was pouring rain, she added actually the YMCA, so it worked out well as a backup location. But I told her, I said, never, ever take my advice in terms of whether or not to cancel the event. I get it wrong every single time. So I'm two for two on getting it wrong.
All right. Well, thank you. Bridget?
Thank you, Your Honor. No update at this time.
All right. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, I do have one update for you this evening. Last Tuesday night, March 6th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., MinDOT held an open house for the I-35 North Metro Split Project. Approximately 150 people signed in for that, so it was very well-attended and with like a relatively new group of faces, too, so really good. That was held at the senior center. Just some highlights that are anticipated with the 2018 construction. They will be resurfacing I-35 from Highway 97 up to Highway 8, which is the north border construction limits. Long-term lane closures are expected on I-35, which will be delineated with concrete barriers, so it'll be pretty easy to self-drive through, kind of what they did on 694 the last couple of years. They will construct the north half of the new Highway 97 bridge over I-35. Highway 97 will remain open all of 2018. Inbankment work and general site preparation for the new highway bridge ramp will take place. Basically, they have to surcharge that area for about nine to 12 months of material sitting there, so that's where kind of you'll see a lot of earthwork moving around up there. They will also construct the new I-35 bridge over I-35E. The bridge will be open to traffic in 2019. So that's what the plan is for 2018, and very well-attended open house, brought a lot of information on site or online, too. I have some of these cards, I left them at the front window. You can certainly grab one of these, and it has the website link, phone number for a hotline, or an email address, too. Email with questions, too. So MinDOT's hired a PR firm to handle all their questions, so nothing's lagging in response times. So obviously, quite the effort there, and I'm looking forward to the project starting probably sometime late April, early May.
So a couple of questions that, I don't know if you can answer them or not, but first, the new flyover bridge on 35WE, is that going to be to the north or the south of the existing one?
Be to the west. North, north or west?
Okay. All right. And then is that whole area, are they intending on reducing the speed to something other than 70, or do you know at all?
I don't know offhand, but I guess I would anticipate it being a reduced speed limit, yeah.
Okay.
So they'll have signs up, you know, making drivers aware in advance per requirements, speed zone change ahead. And then, you know, they'll have it signed with, they'll go through the rules and requirements to have it legally posted at whatever speed limit if they do reduce it down to. And it will be posted with white signs with black lettering, so it looks official and not a construction sign zone on the speed.
And they won't have to close Highway 8 while they're working on it?
No.
So we won't have detuters through Forest Lake? For, for the most part, anyway, hopefully. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Any other questions?
Will part of that work be done in the evening?
I'm sure they'll work around the clock. It's a big boy on the site, you know? That's what they do. They'll probably run two crews, you know? Especially like in the bridge stuff, you know, there'll be a lot of prep work working odd hours, so when their steelworkers come in, it's boom, boom, boom. You know, obviously, pipe work needs to be done. When you get into concrete bonded overlay or concrete work, you know, you're not just going to stop at 5:00 and call it a day. It's where you got to get to, you know? So there'll be a lot of random hours, guys bringing in material probably all hours, too, so. That's good, though, instead of just working part-time, right?
How much of an investment or a community? Is it going to be over 100 million, or?
Thought I saw somewhere last it was $60 million project.
60 million? Okay. Any other questions for Ryan?
No local share, though, from Forest Lake in this project.
Excellent. Sam?
Okay, I attended a couple of school board meetings, you know, it's normal business-type stuff. I also attended a task force that they've formed there at the school. It's basically a conversation about, you know, exactly what we're, what do we want from our public school? And how we're, and how we're going to get there and funding and that sort of thing. Also, Sunday evening, last evening, I also attended a meeting that they had at Vanelle's, just an informational meeting that had to do with the mental health facility that's coming up here, or that they're requesting to come up here in the city of Forest Lake. And it was more or less, and I think Ed can clarify, that was more of an informational thing. It was, got a lot of questions answered on their part, and so it was a pretty good idea what their facility is all about. So that's basically all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Ed?
I also attended the same meeting that Sam just referenced at Vanelle's, and there was a lot of good participation from the city in the way of residents, also some people that the, the project was well represented. They had their, there were people there, and they had Carl Sanderson there, so anybody that had a question, there was someone to talk to and get your question answered. So it was nice to see the city of Forest Lake turnout. I believe there were, I counted 45 to 50 people. I would like to see the next one with 300 or 400 people, but it's a start. Anyways, it was a good, I don't know who, Mara, who organized that, because she should get some kudos.
Jennifer Curtis, Jennifer Larson.
She did an outstanding job.
She did a great job. An interested party resident, she was one of the residents that spoke, and I am blanking on her name right now, so apologies for that.
Anyways, that was well worth attending. I also attended the Airport Commission meeting. The new chair is doing a fantastic job for not knowing all the history of what's going on. It was very refreshing to sit through a civil meeting. It was just refreshing. And along with that note, I've also watched the Park and Trails Board on TV. I watched the EDA, and what's the one I'm missing? Planning Commission. And also watched the Comfort Lake. You think all I do is watch television, watch the Comfort Lake Commission? And we can be proud of those boards. They are very professional, very well-spoken. And for people that don't watch, or don't have the opportunity to watch, it'd be worth looking at. I think they're online, right? I recommend highly that you go look at some of those things, because there's some hard work being put out by residents of this community, and they don't get the accolades that they deserve. Anyways.
Well stated.
Thank you, Ed. Very well spoken. I, too, I entered, attended the Airport Commission meeting, and it was civilized and well-run. Appreciate that. Hopefully, it's a term for the better, and that commission gets on track and has some good discussions, but some productive discussions, anyway. Looking forward to that. Senior Center meeting, everything's going well over there. And Sam, well, both of us attended the EDA meeting tonight. They are looking at bringing in a circulated bus on an experimental basis, but I think we'll be able to get a lot of good data out of it as to how productive it is, how useful it is, and very, very minimal cost for what we're going to see out of it. Total was, I believe, $18,000.
Yeah.
Right in that neighborhood.
I think it was about 12 after, because it was starting in April, not, that 18,000, I think, was the full year.
Full year.
Yeah. Full year, so.
So, yeah, we'll be able to get some good data out of it, and hopefully, you know, see if we can build from there, but.
Did you approve it tonight? Did EDA approve it tonight?
It's approved tonight. It'll be on the council for discussion on, you know, how the city pays for it, if it's coming out of an EDA budget, or out of a council budget, or a shared budget. So we'll have that on the next agenda for discussion along that route. Last Friday, myself and Administrator Undom got to take a tour of the new lighthouse lofts, see how that's coming along. Very nice project on schedule, if not slightly ahead of schedule, which surprised me, but everything's going well over there. They got some really nice views. I think that building is going to fill up really quick, and I think it's going to be a great benefit to the rest of downtown, and I think it's going to spur quite a more development down there. So really excited about seeing that fill up. July 1st is their scheduled date, so hopefully, I talked to them about the potential of opening up a day for some public tours, possibly working it in with one or two of our local organizations and charities, so that, you know, they can do a fundraiser and have a tour at the same time. So we'll see, you know, try and coordinate that as well, so. And Personnel Committee the other night, but we kind of covered that tonight, so.
I also attended the Personnel Committee meeting, also was at the mental health facility open house, and I echo comments on just a real, a nice event, a nice turnout. I also attended the Airport Commission meeting, and I know there's some, a lot of frustration. It's lease renewal time, and so there's some frustration around the lease. And I guess, just, and the comment that was made that struck to me was that there's a lot of complaints and no one's doing anything. And I, my concern is that, and I can only speak for myself, but I'm not tone deaf to the feedback, but my concern is that we've got a significant paving project overage that has yet to be settled. And until, and for me personally, and I've had this conversation numerous times individually, and I guess I just need to say it publicly, until we have that resolved, I'm really apprehensive to do much of anything at the airport, because should that not go well, let's be clear, we've got an airport that is in negative fund balances, essentially bankrupt. Now, hopefully, that's not the case, and hopefully, we've got a much different trajectory. But when we're talking about investment out there and CUP and, or CIP for capital improvements, what we're going to do for the lease and funding, I just really am in a mission of, we need to, in my opinion, tap the brakes until we know what the financial situation really is, and then we can look forward. But if things seem like they're not really being reacted to, in my opinion, because we've got this virtual cloud, financial cloud hanging out out there, that is, again, until it's resolved, I don't think it's prudent to move forward on much of anything. So just, again, I've had that conversation over and over, and I am always hesitant when people say, well, we're not being heard, and I, my message is, we hear you, but we're not in a position to act, so.
Ed?
As a member of the Airport Commission and liaison between the council and that commission, I want to concur with your analysis that, I feel the same. Until this mediation of the cost of the overrun on the paving project is settled, we really don't know where we're at.
We, today, that, those funds are sitting on the general fund, but should that not be resolved satisfactorily? I think we, council has a discussion that we need to have of what happens, and what does that mean financial impact to the airport? And we haven't done that yet. And again, until we know that and have some better information, I think we're all just really treading lightly, so.
Yeah, and even going back to Aaron's budget, where he laid out the airport prior to this shortage, they, if you throw in the maintenance that has to be put aside for hardtop runway.
Right.
They're not in really strong financial positions.
Right. Agree.
That, that number, that number is inflated. I'd like to have the conversation with you sometime, because that number really is inflated.
But if you look at that number.
Yeah, well, and, and that, that comes out of the budget all the time. Yeah, well, and that that comes out of the budget all the time. The rest of it, as far as I'm concerned, just to add to what you're talking about, the frustration really is the fact that it had nothing to do with the Airport Commission or the City Council. Somebody along the line said, go ahead with that that overage. Had nothing to do with the hangar owners, had nothing to do with the Airport Commission, had nothing to do with the council. Because if it had gone to the Airport Commission during that time, I know I would have voted to stop it, and so would you have. And so would have one other member, it would have been stopped right there on the spot. So to talk about a negative fund balance, it's a little bit unfair there because of the fact that it had nothing to do with the folks that were involved.
But it is going to be an airport conversation if it doesn't go well.
I'd have that conversation sometime. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
But on the, on the positive side, you know, all the leases are taken up out there, and the hangar, it's going to be built out. So that's a plus. I mean, it's a real plus.
And, you know, this, this pending lawsuit isn't going to go on indefinitely. And we have commitments, we have commitments to leaseholders, no different than we do to residents. They're going to be taken care of. I don't see the city, you know, reverting back to them for anything. But, you know, I do agree with you, capital improvements are going to be looked at very prudently out there. We need to provide them with a functioning runway.
Right. Agreed.
Taking care of that. But, yeah, you know, as far as investing tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars into anything, I don't see that happening anytime soon. We do have, we do have a very good partnership with MINDOT. I wish they would have been a little bit stronger on, you know, the runway than they did. Unfortunately, at the end, that's between us and the former engineers, so.
Yeah, one of the comments, I'll quit, but within the last year, the amount of tax base that we've increased out there has almost doubled what it was. And that's, and that's the one thing that never, ever gets mentioned. And I know that that doesn't, you know, equate to the fund balance there, but it's still a benefit to the city, it's a benefit to the schools, it's a benefit to the county.
Personal.
Tax base.
And don't get me wrong, I agree with all of those comments. We just still have a pending results of financial, you know, or the current legal situation. There are still some tough conversations to be had, and that is causing some inaction, especially on my part, right? Just, I want to, I want to see how that is resolved before we take action.
I'll be looking forward to it.
Dan, along with, the question is, MINDOT got back to us?
Not officially yet. Mr. Mayor, I make motion adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.